I'll call this meeting to order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chillicothe Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the Gates Chillicothe News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the Town Hall. If you could, please silence or turn off all your phones and pagers, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits at the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda in the order it was published unless otherwise stated. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you are a representative and applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson. Stand, state your name, and address for the record. Please speak so that all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. I will now introduce the Board members and the side table participants. To my far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons, who will be late tonight, Al Hallaby, Mike Nyhan, Glenn Hyde is excused, and Keith Bozek is in his place, David Cross, and Michael Leone. At our side table, we have Michael Hanscom, our Town Engineer, our Building Department Manager, Paul Wanzinreid, Jared Hurt, our Planning Board Counsel, and our Planning Board Alternate, Hans Lindenhovis. Our recording secretary tonight is Sandra Hewlett. The first application is the application of Passer Associates, Trevor Hout, P.E., 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614, applicant. Chillicothe Development Group, LLC, Joe Gizzi, 3850 Buffalo Road, Rochester, New York, 14624. Owner for preliminary subdivision approval, three parcels into five parcels. Property located at 3235, 3249, and 3253 Chillicothe Avenue in the B District. Also, the application of Passer Associates, Trevor Hout, P.E., 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614, applicant. Chillicothe Development Group, LLC, Joe Gizzi, 3850 Buffalo Road, Rochester, New York, is the owner. For a preliminary site plan approval to construct three commercial buildings, special use permit to allow outdoor dining at the property located at 3235, 3249, and 3253 Chillicothe Avenue in the GB District.
My name is Trevor Hout, civil engineer with Passer Associates, representing the applicant, the Chillicothe Development Group, Joe Gizzi. We're here to have a discussion for the proposed preliminary site plan application for the three commercial quick-serve restaurant buildings along Chillicothe Avenue opposite of Chillicothe Pall Plaza. The redevelopment project site is located across Chillicothe Pall Plaza, north of Memorial Park, and on the corner of Old Scottsville-Chillicothe Road and Chillicothe Avenue. The proposal excludes the western portion of the Fire District parcel, and the preliminary site application consists of three commercial buildings along Chillicothe Avenue and a 630 linear foot dedicated roadway that connects Chillicothe Avenue to Memorial Park Drive. The addresses associated with the parcels are 3253 Chillicothe Ave., 3249 Chillicothe Ave., and 3235 Chillicothe Avenue. The proposed, or the total site area is 6.28 acres. The site is currently vacant, developed land, and is within the general business district. So, we are submitted for the preliminary site plan, which includes the three buildings along Chillicothe Avenue. The final Phase 1A site plan would just be that center building. This is what the final Phase 1A application will look like, but like I said, we are here for the preliminary overall and subdivision and special use permit for outdoor dining. I handed you guys that site plan. That is what we're considering as final scope, not for the Phase 1A, but we want preliminary approval for everything, and then that would be our initial anchor for the project. So, the Panera and the Chipotle sites, we're just seeking the preliminary site plan approval, and we're still working through the final design with the end user. In addition, the Phase 1A final scope will not fully build out the dedicated roadway, but stub it halfway. This is critical to the economics of the project by taking on only enough infrastructure costs to get this anchoring point in the ground to attract other end users. So, the Starbucks building is centrally located on Chillicothe Ave., frontage, west of the proposed dedicated town roadway. The building's approximately 7,200 square foot of gross floor area, with the Starbucks occupying the western end cap. The proposed Starbucks drive-thru is located on the western side yard, with its being setback 10 feet from the Chillicothe Avenue right-of-way, and wraps around the western parking area. Relief exits are provided into the parking area. This drive-thru will be screened from Chillicothe Ave. with substantial landscaping. The other two tenants proposed within the building. The eastern end cap is proposed with a pickup lane. Parking is provided to the east between the dedicated roadway and the building. Sorry. And parking is also provided in the rear. Any parking visible from Chillicothe Ave. will have that substantial landscaping buffer. The Panera building is located on the northwest corner of Old Scottsville Road in Chillicothe Ave. The long side of the building fronts Chillicothe Ave. with a proposed 10-foot front setback. A drive-thru is provided in the rear of the building and will be shielded from view from the Chillicothe Ave. by the building. Parking is provided east of the building and will be screened from Chillicothe Ave. with substantial landscaping. Landscaping proposed within the New York State right-of-way will be permitted appropriately. Finally, the Chipotle building is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Chillicothe Ave. and the proposed dedicated roadway. The long side of the building fronts the dedicated roadway with a 10-foot front setback. A pickup window is provided on the east side of the building. Parking is provided on the east side and the southern rear area. Landscape is screening is proposed along Chillicothe Ave. to shield the side yard parking. So, this initial QSR phase will establish nationally-recognized restaurants along Chillicothe Ave. to realize the Main Street initiative outlined in the updated 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Main point initiatives within the sub-area number four, which is the Chillicothe Center. There's some variances that are required to support the project. Area variance to allow 10-foot front setback, which is outlined in the master planning documents and the Architectural Committee documents. There's an area variance to allow the omission of off-street loading berth for a commercial building greater than 5,000 square feet. Variance to allow less than a 60-foot side/rear setback, and the omission of the 30-foot landscape buffer. And then, the fourth variance is to allow a lot depth less than 250 feet. This would also include a special permit for outdoor dining. The special use permit would apply to the final Phase 1A patio areas in front of the Starbucks building and in the rear of the Starbucks building, where we have that seated patio labeled on the plan. You know, this development is in line with the town's master planning documents. It connects, you know, this first phase is going to be key to the entire development coming to fruition, and that entire development will provide a pedestrian connection to Memorial Park from Chillicothe Pall Plaza. It'll facilitate a multimodal connectivity to the recreation center and ballpark facilities, and it'll help realize the complete streets program with that dedicated roadway connecting Memorial Park and Chillicothe Avenue. It also is in line with the Chillicothe Center master plan with those additional pedestrian connections outlined as initiatives that are complemented by the proposal. And with that, I will end my presentation and open it up to questions from the Board and Side Table. Thank you.
Did you see the engineer's review letter?
I did, yeah.
See any issues and accomplishments?
Nope, nope. They made sense. A lot of that is going to be applied with our final Phase 1A plan set, and also applied to the overall preliminary plan set as well.
And the connection for the road, is that once the front along Chillicothe Avenue is built out, then you'll make the connection through?
Yeah, basically, any development past that first initial building will include the completed roadway.
Oh, okay.
You know, completing that roadway is going to trigger some pretty substantial infrastructure costs. So, at this point, it being stubbed to provide access into the Starbucks parking facilities is the preferred route in the direction that we're moving after this initial tenant is anchored, and, you know, it'll attract the other tenants and then allow us to complete that roadway and complete the initiatives outlined in the master plan.
Thank you. Your turn now.
My turn. I think we touched briefly last meeting. What's going to trigger a traffic light at this operation?
Basically, anything past what I'm showing on the Phase, final Phase 1A.
Do you turn in a traffic study for this? Because I don't ever recall seeing it.
Yeah, that is being finalized this week, and we're submitting to the DOT this week as well. We'll make sure to copy the town in on that correspondence. And also provide a traffic study for review.
I won't put you on the spot, but Joe alluded to the engineer's comments, who have no problems.
Yeah, we did a review today, talked about how we would meet those, and nothing jumped out as a deal breaker. Some adjustments to the electric vehicle parking situation, some landbank parking there below the Road A. that we're showing, but those are some of the comments that we started to look at, but nothing substantial that would be a deal breaker. We're planning to address those and submit these.
I know, and one of the things they were saying, they wanted to see a path for an oversized vehicle.
Yes.
To make the turns and whatnot in there. And I don't ever recall seeing anything on these drive-up windows that proves to me that at any given time, there won't be 20-some people in each other's way back there. The problem being is you got three or four buildings so tight together, and now you're bringing all these other people in there. It just makes me concerned.
Yeah, we'll prepare those vehicle tracking diagrams, and those will be released to the town with our comment response.
All for right now.
The last time we talked, when we were meeting with the town, we'd indicated that that road, the preference for the town was for that road to go all the way through and connect to Memorial Park Drive, and that was our understanding that that was going to happen. I see that's changed. I'd like you to ask, you make sure you get in touch with the Commissioner of Public Works on our Building Department as soon as possible to discuss that. Also, to include in your traffic study, that road being completed as well as it being stubbed.
Yeah, we have those two alternatives analyzed.
So that we have both of those counts? Okay. I don't think much else has changed since the last time you were in.
We did meet with the Conservation Board. They were appreciative of the proposed landscaping and screening.
I saw the response, thank you. There was, on the, the elevations that you provided, I know you were in front of AAC tonight to review that, and the south elevation looks like the main entrance, which is going to face inward towards the parking lot, which is a much nicer-looking entrance than the north elevation, which is facing Chillicothe Avenue, and the whole intent of bringing the buildings up close to the road is to give it that look and feel of a community center, and I think you should give some consideration to switching those two around, and perhaps on where you have as a north elevation now with a single door, making that a double door and maybe having that face south, and the south face north, because it'll look like that's where it belongs as you line the street.
Yeah, we can definitely address the frontage facing Chillicothe Avenue.
All right, thank you. Traffic study you'll have, the diagram you'll have, you saw the Fire Marshal's comments regarding fire hydrant on the property?
Yeah, we're working through those.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Keith?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I saw in one of the county reports, they had been suggesting maybe improvements to the bus shelters out on Chillicothe Ave. Has any of that been considered?
Yeah, we could definitely take a look at that, updating that.
I think it's going along the idea of the Main Street kind of feel that the bus shelters are, you know, that get a lot of traffic out there, there'd be a lot of people there, you know, is my ideal, you know, way of bringing more people into the plaza itself. And I think the other concern that I did have, and I kind of, just echoing this turning movements, the making sure that, you know, vehicles of large radius can get into there, because I do, I do sort of feel the same concerns about, you know, particularly busy times, you know, there's just going to be traffic stacking back. Right now, if you look at the McDonald's when it's really busy, you know, they're sometimes almost up to the street, you know, and I know that's almost possible to always, you know, you can only plan to some degree, but the turning movements, I think, is important. The other comment that I had was, in terms of the Main Street when it's coming out onto Chillicothe Avenue, is just the general sightlines as you're looking along Chillicothe Avenue to make turns, because one of the things I often observe when people are coming up and down Chillicothe Avenue is that sometimes it's quite an effort to get, to make a left turn across traffic, so that the sightlines are, I think, are going to be really important there, because I see there's trees planned and, you know, lots of, many things on the frontage, just to make sure that the sightlines are good.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, Trevor, so one thing, you know, I think you probably, we should probably think about adding a pedestrian link if this road's just going to stub halfway down, to maybe extend a sidewalk.
Okay.
Down and tie it into Memorial Park Drive from Chillicothe Avenue.
Okay.
And then, you know, I guess, you know, I have no comments really on the subdivision, but the site plan, you know, my concern, I said at the last meeting, is the façades of the buildings facing Chillicothe Avenue. I think they really need to have a common field between the three buildings. Really look hard at the Chillicothe Center master plan. Calls for federal-style buildings, brick façades. I think that would match, and I said at the last meeting, the bank of Castile or Tompkins Bank across the street, that's a very similar look to, I think, what the master plan is looking for. Faisade, 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 that's it, on Chillicothe Avenue, that's my biggest concern.
Valid, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Mike?
I have no comments. Your question?
Mike, comments for the side table?
One question, actually. Your utility plan, water main that goes along the proposed Main Street, you like the dead end, instead of taking it down and connecting it to the existing hot box and some Memorial Park Drive?
So, there's a hot box at Old Scottsville-Chillicothe Road that's a private water. So...
Supposedly, it's going to be a private water main?
No, but the water main on Memorial Park Drive is private, so there's no public main to connect to.
Oh, okay, that's true.
Ideally, it would be, we would loop it, but, you know, yeah.
Where is that main that you're showing? Which one is it?
So, there's a water main that serves as a community center?
Sure, I mean, on the property, the one you have coming in where the hydrant will be?
That's coming down this west side, within the right of the hydrant.
All right. So, you're aware that on the east side of the property line, there's another water main?
Right here, yes.
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 Could you connect it to that, so it's a loop and not a dead end?
I think, yeah, there'd be an opportunity to loop.
Prefer not to have a dead-end water main in a complex that size.
I think, I definitely think there's an opportunity to loop it over half, and then floor down.
Thank you. Any other comments, the side table? Mike, Paul?
No.
Any comments? None? Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments and questions from the audience, please? Anybody like to comment? If not, at this time, I'm going to leave the public hearing open for the next meeting. Do the seeker, you're aware that we'll be doing seeker, type 1 action?
Yeah, are you declaring intent to be lead agent?
Yes, I'll do that, but I didn't, I want to make sure you are aware of that.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mike, are you doing that for each and every one of the pending applications before?
Yes, the site plan as well as the...
I would break those out, break that to, put yourself as lead agency, send it out for coordinated review.
For both of them?
Noon.
Right.
So, you want to distinguish them out?
Okay.
Right now, there's technically two applications, three forms of lead.
Okay.
For the record, clarify.
Sure, okay. So, for the first application, the application for the preliminary subdivision approval, based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determining the application to be a type 1 action, the Planning Board will send notice to interested parties and declare our intent to be lead agency. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mike, the first one's not a type 1.
Okay, that's the subdivision.
Subdivision's not a type 1.
That goes all the way back to the park lane, correct?
That one, yeah, three parcels into five parcels. So, your fifth parcel is, kind of here. Okay, so you say, one, two, three, four. That is directly joining park lane. So, first one, if the parcel is adjoining the park lane, that is a type 1 action.
And I do believe it's adjoining the park lane, correct?
So, that one has to be, that one would be a type 1.
Okay, yes, with the preliminary subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
You're good. Go ahead.
Okay, so I had a second on that?
Second.
Yes.
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 And I'll also vote yes. The second one is the application of Passer Associates for preliminary site plan approval to construct three commercial buildings, special use permit to allow outdoor dining at the property located at 3235, 3249, and 3253 Chillicothe Avenue, GB District. Based on evidence and information presented at the meeting, determine the application to be a type 1 action. The Planning Board will send notice to interested parties and declare the intent to be lead agency. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. We'll send, we'll send those notices out immediately and wait for responses, and then we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Application of Cozel Steel, Jeffrey Loffler, 1150 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624, applicant. 1150 Scottsville Road, LLC. 1150 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner. For preliminary site plan approval to construct commercial retail edition property located at 1150 Scottsville Road in the GB District.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Alex Amring. I'm with Costage Engineering, offices at 217 Lake Ave., Rochester, New York. We're obviously before this board for a preliminary site plan application. The facility is located at 1150 Scottsville Road. Everyone probably knows that is the current Cozel Steel facility. I think what a lot of people don't know, Cozel Steel operates a contractor supply business called The Tool Ranch. There are currently two locations, one in Ontario, New York, one in Lancaster, New York. The Ontario location is currently leased. Their lease is up this summer, so the opportunity presented itself to bring the Rochester location back to Chillicothe and build a new facility. You'll see on the site plan, it is attached to the existing office. That provides a number of benefits, obviously, as the two businesses kind of operate in tandem. The new building is about 10,000 square feet. About a third of that is retail. That's in the front of the building, facing Scottsville Road. Roughly a third is warehousing for the product they would be selling, and then the rear portion is kind of a drive-through. They do have some pickup orders, and they also do job site delivery of the products they sell. Regarding the site itself, we are adding some parking, 14 dedicated spots for The Tool Ranch. They will also be striping the existing office parking lot. Currently, it is not striped. We're reconfiguring some of the fencing around the facility, mainly to provide security for the steel operation in the back. Utilities are all located on-site. Access will not be changed. There's currently a full access onto Scottsville Road. There's also an access onto the private drive, which connects to Scottsville at a signalized Stormwater, we do fall under the 1-acre threshold. We will be draining to existing storm sewers. Lighting, there's only two new light, site light poles. The rest of the lighting is building-mounted. Landscape, we've submitted a landscape plan and also an estimate that proves the 1% requirement is being met relative to the construction cost of the project. The landscape was reviewed by the Conservation Board last week. They generally appreciated it. There's a rather minimal landscape in front of the Cozel office today, so not only are we landscaping in front of The Tool Ranch, but we're kind of carrying the theme across both buildings, so it will present itself nicely to Scottsville Road. The architecture, obviously, was presented to the Board before this meeting. That was generally well-received. There are a couple of clarifications were asked for regarding the color schemes, but the architecture as a whole will match the existing architecture of the office. A few procedural items. One area variance is required. It's for front yard parking. I think you can see how the parking layout was derived, essentially because it matches the parking and drive aisle layout for the existing office. We will be appearing before the ZBA at the meeting on the 25th for that. Another procedural item, we did get the county referral back. I'm happy to go through any of that. We're comfortable addressing those comments. And lastly, we did receive Town Engineering comments. We addressed all of them last week, and today, we did respond. president and vice president of Cozal, and also Jim and Jennifer from Nichols Construction Team, who are the, the construction managers for the project. So I think with that being said, I'd like to take any comments from the board.
Sure.
How much of a business increase do you envision coming from your Ontario location? Much of anything?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I'm sorry.
They're clearing.
How much of a business increase do you envision happening coming from your Ontario operation? You're going to close that down completely?
Correct, when the lease is up.
All right, and they're going to operate out of Scottsville Road? You know, dollar, just rough dollar value?
Probably around $2 million in sales.
Sir, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Jeff Loffler, President of Cozal Steel, Jay Cozal's son.
All right. Presently, do you guys still do, like, basement beams and what? I know you're very limited as far as joists and things like that, but I don't know how big of a job you guys get into anymore. Just out of curiosity.
I mean, we'll be doing the steel direction on this job.
Strange, right?
Pretty bad we saw somebody else's steel coming on the property.
It was intended to do a pre-...
You don't envision any bigger trucks than already coming in and out of there, coming in. All right, that's all I got for right now.
That cross easement access that you have, that's existing, correct? There's no new easement that you have to obtain?
No, on the side road.
Correct.
No, the easement extends up to their entrance off of the road.
All right, so there's nothing new that you're doing there?
Nope.
Okay. I did speak with the chair of the AAC, and he did say the building looks good. A couple of things are going to change, but other than that, we're going to accept the recommendation that they make. Looks like the elevations look very nice. It'll be a nice building.
New building's a little taller, but we're also kind of adding, I would call it, a vestibule, which kind of steps down and bridges the two together, so we're happy with it.
Do you have roof units on the building?
There will be, they'll be located towards the rear, you know, so naturally, the sightline from the front facade will screen them.
Okay. From Scottsville Road, they'll be screened?
They won't be screened themselves, but the sightline, you know, off of Scottsville because they'll be set so far back on the building. I don't believe they'll be visible.
All right. Do you have any problems with meeting all of the county comments that they had made in there?
No, it looked like all, obviously, being in the proximity of the airport, they look at that a little closer. That was all, you know, checked off.
Okay.
Pure waters, water will deal with them. I think that was it. No, we're not proposing anything with Scottsville Road, so hopefully, we don't have to go with the state DOT.
Okay. All I have, Keith?
I think just a number of employees, you know, projected to be added, you know, just get an idea for parking, you know, how many more employees they think they're going to be added.
And Jeff Loffler, probably about between five and eight additional employees.
Dave?
No comment?
Mike?
No comment.
Say, David?
No, no additional comments.
Additional comments?
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any other discussion or comments, questions? Okay. For seeker, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency, based on evidence and information presented at this meeting. To turn the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. So for conditions, I have the approval is subject to final approval of the town engineer and the commissioner of public works. The town engineer and the commissioner of public works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. This is pending approval of the zoning board of appeals for all required variances. And the applicant to comply with all conditions of the zoning board of appeals as applicable. Any signage change shall comply with town code, including obtaining signed permits. The planning board affirms the recommendation of the conservation board for the landscape plan, and the applicant comply with these recommendations. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance of the approved landscape plan. The applicant shall submit the design elevations to the AAC for their review and recommendation, which I know you've already done, and the planning board affirms the recommendation of the architectural advisory committee and requests that the applicant comply with these recommendations. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. The applicant is, the application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. Are there any other conditions? Seeing none?
Did you say sign?
Any signage change requires a permit. Let's follow the code. Okay. With those conditions, the application of Cozal Steel Jeffrey Loffler, 1150 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 applicant, 1150 Scottsville Road LLC, 1150 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for preliminary site plan approval to construct a commercial retail addition at the property located at 1150 Scottsville Road in the GB District.
Second.
Yes.
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 One thing, Paul was final. Wait for, okay.
He asked to ask.
You requesting final waiver on this? Okay. In that case...
For the record.
Sure you are.
Yes.
Sorry, I missed that when I first read it. So with those conditions, the application of Cozal Steel Jeffrey Loffler, 1150 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 applicant, 1150 Scottsville Road LLC, 1150 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for preliminary site plan approval with the waiver of final to construct commercial retail addition at the property located at 1150 Scottsville Road, the GB District.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Thank you, you're approved.
Thanks for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, before we move to the next application, I'd like to move to executive section. Okay, we'll move out of executive session and back into the planning board meeting. Where did everybody go?
Clean house.
Number four is the revocation of a special use permit granted by the Town of Chi-Lai Planning Board, 3333 Chi-Lai Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14624, to Puff Smoke Shop, Ali Salah, 81 Conkey Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14621, proprietor, proprietor, JR Realty Estate Inc., 630 West Ridge Road, Suite 12, Rochester, New York, 14621, owner, for use of similar character granted on January 10, 2023, to allow a retail smoke shop at 4390 Buffalo Road in the GB District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. My name is Paul Wanzenreid, building inspector for the Town of Chi-Lai, 3333 Chi-Lai Ave, Rochester, New York, 14624. You all have my letter that I issued to the tenant and to the property owner, which outlined my criteria for revocation and subsequent documentation. Is there any questions that you have for me?
No particular questions. But could you just, for the record, spell out what you did with the applicant to inform them and the objection that they had that you'd see for revocation?
In January, in December of 2021, Town Chi-Lai passed a local law that opted out of all cannabis uses within the town. That included cannabis retail dispensaries and on-site consumption in the Town of Chi-Lai. The special use was granted by the Town of Chi-Lai on January 10, 2023, and that was, would be granted to the tenant and to the property owner as special uses run with the property. During the public hearing, the applicant expressed no intentions to operate a cannabis dispensary, nor did his letter of intent indicate that as well. On February 14, 2024, the Town of Chi-Lai adopted a local law, which was the Smoke and Vape Shop Ordinance. The, in July 10 of 2024, the Office of Cannabis Management closed said location with a notice of violation of selling cannabis. By the violations of 416-7 of the Smoke and Vape Shop Ordinance, which obligated the tenant or proprietor to come and obtain a certificate of nonconformity. That was not a done, and by violating the local law, it violates the special use permit.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Wanzenreid, may I, the special use permit that was issued on or about December 10, 2023, from the Town Chi-Lai Planning Board, what were the uses that were permitted within that?
It was a use of similar character, which would have been similar to, excuse me for one moment while I pull the code up, would be similar to variety store, gift, notion, toy, pet, hobby, video rentals. They believe it was issued upon a variety store, and their variety store, according to their letter of...
The use that was similar that was represented by the applicant at the time was the sale of tobacco products?
Sale of tobacco products and associated merchandise.
Including clothing?
Clothing, novelty items, that sort of thing.
And you provided the owner of the premises with 10 days' recognition of this hearing, is that correct?
That is correct. I mailed, and I posted to the front of the storefront my letter.
Thank you. And your letter set forth an actual basis which constitutes a violation of...
That is correct.
We testify to this, but at no point in time from February of 2024, occurring, did the owner of the premises or the owner of the subject establishment submit to you an application for a nonconforming use subject to check of 416 of the Smoke and Vape Shops Law of Town Chi-Lai. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the, on inspection of your office, you can attest that the subject property has been vacated and is no longer operational?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing for this, this hearing, this application. Seeing nobody is left in the audience, I will make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. I'd just like also make note that nobody from Puff Smoke Shop nor JR Realty is in the audience, as there is nobody in our audience, so they did not come to this hearing to be heard. And I believe counsel, all of the requirements have been met?
That is certainly a determination for the planning board to make.
Okay. They appear to have all been met by me. It appears to me they have all been met. Any questions or further discussion? Okay. With that, and there is no seeker relative to this, obviously. So with that, the revocation of a special use permit granted by the Town of Chi-Lai Planning Board, 3333 Chi-Lai Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14624, to Puff Smoke Shop, Ali Salah, 81 Conkey Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14621, proprietor, JR Realty Estate Inc., wow, JR Realty Estate Inc., 630 West Ridge Road, Suite 12, Rochester, New York, 14621, owner, for use of similar character granted on January 10, 2023, to allow our retail smoke shop at 4390 Buffalo Road. I think all the evidence has been presented to us, and I would make the recommendation that this special use permit be revoked. A second?
Are you making a motion for that revocation?
Yes, I am.
Is that revocation temporary or permanent in nature?
Permanent in nature.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. The application, or the special use permit has been permanently revoked.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice job, Perry Mason.
Okay. Need a motion for last month's meeting minutes, to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Make a motion.
Second? Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any other business before the board?
Yeah, the Planning Federation, don't forget.
Oh, yes, I'll ask everybody after this. Then I'll close the meeting.